Okay, good. So we will formally, formally open up, we're gonna kick off today with the public hearing on school choice. This public hearing is a yearly requirement before we take a vote. So first, just a roll call. Tim Knight is here.
Sheldon Kirkpatrick here, Chris Simonyi here.
Will Horn here.
Thank you. And just a quick kind of agenda that I think we would follow is first I was gonna ask Dr. Morrison to share some background on this other information and high level recommendation. Then we're gonna take questions from the public or statements from the public, whether it's here or on Zoom. If you're on Zoom, ask that you raise your Zoom hand and in either case state your name and address before. We would also then take questions from the school committee. Questions, statements, and it's pretty loose. I mean, part of the public forum is it's a little more conversation, discussion, depending what comes up. If anything, we talk about warrants more discussions or questions from the public, we'd be willing to take it unless it goes back and forth like 27 times. And we might decide, but I don't think that's likely. And eventually, though, we would, you know, look to take a vote on it. And we do not have Leo here today, as I understand it, he's got other business. So with that, Dr. Morrison, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your materials, I put a school choice recommendation, and I just want to share that. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter 76, Section 12B, all school districts in Massachusetts are presumed to participate in and admit non-residential students to the school choice program. School choice created an option for a family to enroll their child in a school district outside of where the child lives. Essentially, if Medfield Public Schools participated in the school choice, a student could live anywhere in a Massachusetts town and attend school in Medfield. And Medfield has never participated in the program in the last 30 years since law. So although there's an opportunity to gain revenue of $5,000 per student, which Medfield currently spends $18,435 per student, and it adds students outside of Medfield to our enrollment, there are several concerns to consider when determining to participate in the school choice program, and they are as follows. One, increase to class size over the Medfield enrollment. The students, teachers, and parents enjoy lower class size, especially at the secondary level. Additional non-Medfield students would increase the student teacher ratio in both core classes and electives, especially at the high school. Reduction of opportunities for Medfield students. In addition to increasing class size and potentially limiting access to classes and electives, non-Medfield students could take away opportunities in our athletic, music, and theater programs. Three, Medfield taxpayers subsidizing the education of non-Medfield students. Medfield currently spends over $18,000 per student to educate Medfield kids. School choice students, school choice students would require Medfield residents to subsidize the other $13,000 per student. Lack, lack of control when demand outweighs slots. A lottery system would be need to put in place to do if the demand for non-Medfield students is larger than the seats open at a particular grade level. And you can pick grade levels. You could pick a number. You could have five in grade two, six in grade one, 100 in grade 10, and whatever you choose, you could do that. So if the, the demand outweighs that, then you need to have a random lottery. Removing funding from other school districts. When school districts lose funds, staff and programs get terminated. If Medfield were to participate, we'd be siphoning funds earmarked for students in another town. Commitment to siblings of enrolled school choice students. Medfield would have the responsibility to non-Medfield student siblings should slots be available on a particular grade level. This is additional responsibility and/or expense for students not living in Medfield. So if we have student A in grade eight, and then they have a sibling in another grade that has open slots, we have responsibility to give them an opportunity to participate in school choice. Implications to local real estate. Parents always say they moved to Medfield for the schools. Why would you pay Medfield prices if you live somewhere else and still send your children to Medfield? A local real estate agent has told me that there could be negative real estate impacts with school choice. Not educational, but you live here, you'll need to know that part. These concerns and challenges highlight the impact participating in the school choice program and what they could have on the district. Based on these reasons, I continue to recommend that the Medfield Public Schools does not participate in the school choice program for FY '24. I'm happy to answer any questions. Also, in your materials, you had a list of districts that do not take or don't do not participate in school choice. And we've talked about the only two districts in the area that do are Holliston and Medway, and no one else in the area does.
And Millis too, right?
I'm sorry?
Millis too?
Millis might.
I think the three is what I read.
So let's all have a Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Is there any questions from the public or on Zoom?
We have people on Zoom. If you're on Zoom and you want to ask a question, please raise your hand.
Your hands, okay.
Typically, Ellen.
Ellen, can you promote the person so they can speak?
And if possible, put on a Zoom camera.
Hi, Chris. Chris, are you able to put your?
The question is, I don't see this on the agenda for tonight's meeting. The school choice hearing, and there was no hearing notice in the paper?
That was on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
I'm looking at the agenda now.
Right under enter the webinar ID, it says public hearing, choice, school, and then public input is right after that.
But is there, was there a hearing notice in the paper?
Not required. Yeah, hold on a second, because I just want to see the policy. So the It's only for the public hearing for the budget, not for this.
So as I understand it, for public hearings are required by law and all those give due and public notice in line with statutory requirements and seek to publicize the meeting in all local media. One, two, make available printed information on the topic of the hearing.
Really?
It's just our policies.
Okay.
There needs to be a notice of a public hearing, and you actually search the online notices. Do you find the other districts that have their online, their notices for public hearing?
We checked our attorney's book.
There are some misstatements here in terms of that, in terms of pure facts. There's no requirement to admit siblings. It is an optional within school choice to admit siblings.
I think I said.
And we still have yet to see any data as to how many seats we could potentially have available in any particular grade, and particular at the high school, when our enrollment is going to be dipping so low come this fall. We have never gotten any kind of presentation. We've only heard the cons, but we've never had a presentation on the possible pros. Actual data presented with, with real number.
My second paragraph is two pros. So, so yeah, I think, I think we're gonna, one, I think, because I want, I want to stay, follow both pieces as well. There is part of the reason this is a public hearing is there is conversation, you know, as you talk about that. So the content that he has is what, you know, what we've shared so far. Before going into that too, I still, I don't really, I'm not excited about holding a public hearing if we're in violation of laws. Like, I don't, I don't know all the laws, you know.
We've never posted a public hearing for school choice. We've checked with our attorneys on that. That wasn't a requirement that, that they talked to us about. It definitely is for the public hearing for budget. You know, we do that long in advance multiple times, but not for the school choice.
Please go ahead and look at the online, what's in the under cover of this. Did I talk to DCE about this? And it is supposed to be published in the newspaper, or is it supposed, we do know that public public hearing on the school choice hearing. This is, it's ridiculous that this is even an argument. So many other districts publish this in the paper. You can look at it online. Day and night, most of them do it as far as the budgeting process. They don't do this right up against, you know, close to the deadline of when this requires it. I could, I could send you multiple examples of other districts that have posted, do notice about this.
And historically, how many members of our community have chosen to participate in the topic of school choice?
For what, at the public hearing?
Yeah, have, have attended to, to discuss this. Well, it has some bearing, because I think it has something to do with the interest level of the community on this topic, which is something that I think would be interesting for us to understand.
Well, if you have, if you're, if there's a history of not providing due notice, which is usually 10 days in advance, and people are waiting until the agenda is posted 48 hours in advance, and there's been no thoughtful presentation with actual data to say, you know, if we were gonna go with this, if we were gonna consider this, we would have, for example, 15 empty seats that we could consider at the high school level. That would generate X amount of revenue. I'm not, I'm not a, a for pro-choice or against of school choice. I'm just saying that there may need to be, Holliston has done an amazing presentation on that. I have gotten, I have a, a good friend who's a former chair of the Holliston School Committee, who has shared with me the very detailed data-based presentation on school choice.
Chris, Chris, if we, if we counted on, if we counted on school choice revenue in our budget like Holliston does, then you can bet that'd be part of our presentation. But we, we have never had, we have never had school choice in Medfield. It is not part of our budget process. So there's no need to do that as part of the budget, like you keep, you brought it up a couple of years ago as well. Yeah.
Because you ever, we have a responsibility as a school committee to make data-driven decisions. And there had been no actual data for years presented on school choice in terms of how many seats. How, how long are we on enrollment in, on, on the high school level? Where, what, 700? You know, just under 800 students? This was something that you, you, Mr. Superintendent, brought up at the beginning of the budgeting process.
Correct.
That there's a real risk of having a very low enrollment at the high school, and that tough decision is going to be made. Well, I think the community has an obligation. They, they should be thinking the real numbers. How long are we gonna go? Could, could, I think, you know, could filling 10 seats on the bus?
So, so, so I'm hearing, hold on, in general, we try to retain some orders. So I am hearing that you'd like to hear additional data on what, you know, seats may be available. So, so let's, let's at least see if we can talk about that. I'm, I'm honest, I'm still I don't like the prospect of inadvertently violating DC rules, regulations, or our own policies. I, I don't like that, because immediately what happens is we are called out on it. It opens up a lot of attorney work and, and, you know, time and effort and energy. That, that's where I'm still.
So.
I don't, I don't know. I, you know, I just don't know. The, the, in general, a, a public hearing, I think, is, it's, it's a good idea. Publicized, that may have been an administrative.
Are we supposed to be talking about this right now? Are we supposed to?
It's on our agenda. We're not taking, we, we, nobody's taken a vote yet.
Okay.
Okay, so just, just bear with that. But I'm, I'm still, that's an area that I, I just say.
I was not, I don't know. Chris, you said you weren't for, or like, are you, do you have an opinion or some informa, like, on which way we should go on this?
I've never seen, I've never seen the financials presented today. How many empty seats based on our enrollment? We have in a particular, we should be showing. We don't, what is, what is our spread capacity at each of our schools? Based on our projected enrollment, we get the projected enrollment number.
Yeah.
But we have to show, okay, we have building capacity for X amount of students. Based on our, our last enrollment projection, here's the number. We have open.
Yeah.
Is it worth it? Is it worth it with this being creating an extra class? Or can we get by when the current students we have or the current staff we now have? It really needs to be done, projected.
Right. One, one data point that I heard when I, or when I was trying to, like, research this is, you know, we, we gain 5,000 if a kid comes in, right? But we're spending 18,000 on a kid. So, so to me, that's, you know, backwards $13,000, right? So as the enrollment declines, you know, if, if right now we have a low enrollment, you know, that, that's better teacher ratios, that's more opportunity for our kids who live here. So can you help me understand why filling those classes where it would cost us money, like, how, how would that be a good thing? Okay.
You're paying, you're paying, you're paying the cost of the gas, you're paying insurance, you're paying all these, all these costs. You know, the, the late bus is a really good example of that.
Yeah.
That late bus that will hang all this money out, that we only have, it's only like, five, six kids? How, how is it worth it to run that bus?
Yeah.
Presenting all that night. If we were to charge a per head, we wouldn't be able to cover our costs. It's the same thing with a classroom. If you have a classroom with a teacher, you're paying the teacher, paying all of it, paying all of that cost. And if you have a class of five kids, when you could have a class of 10, or 15, or 20, and you could be bringing in revenues for all those extra students, that money that you didn't have.
Oh, yeah, but so.
So I think that's a conversation we can have, like, there's pros and cons.
Like, if the bus isn't full, and we're paying the bus driver and bus insurance, and we add a kid for $1, that, that helped, well, I mean, you know, depending where they live or whatever, but point taken. But in school, in school choice, we're going negative $13,000 to fill a seat, and we are, we are the, the, the student to teacher ratio, the experience of our kids and taxpayers in, in, in Medfield is worse. If we have more ki, like, it is better with less kids, and we're going backwards. So the bus analogy, where I think I understand where you're going with it. I, I don't think it's the same thing.
You know, now still, because certainly you have some classes now that only have which could be better to have 15, for example. You could, you could open up 10 seats, or 10, you don't have to open up on your end.
So, but what I, and
We just need actual data to say, here's the number of seats we have available. Here's the cost of the district. And, and we're talking about, we're not talking about gross equipment net costs, because the price, the cost per student that's being touted here is not the number that we've been sharing with Trinity for what the cost per student is going to be when they were in the, doing their initial project.
So what is that? So I don't understand.
I want to, I want to keep it on some degree of focus. I think, you know, this is my perspective, and I, I don't know, maybe we need to dig in. There is, I, I do understand at least the high level under, of the bus analogy. We, we have the people on staff, if a certain grade had capacity, and we could say, we're, we're open to school choice for grade nine, section such and such, that might be a good thing. I think the counterpoint that I heard from Dr. Morrison is if we, if there's more demand than we have seats, then it goes into a lottery in terms of where we take these students, you know. So in the example of the high school has seats, but the, you know, the elementaries don't. We're at capacity. That's, I think, what I look at as the risk on that point. So if I say the financial pros and cons, it doesn't jump off the page at me that this is a pro. Right? Now, anyone else sitting here might say, no, like, but getting those extra six students is $30,000 with the sunk cost of all our staff. We can all make our own, you know, everyone has, gonna have a different opinion.
I guess, yeah, go ahead. I've been talking. What do you?
So I was just gonna say, because this is not a topic that I had previously been familiar with before coming into this role, I've been doing a lot of reading and a lot of canvassing. And I've talked to a variety of folks, some with students in the district, some who had students in the district who are now grown, some teachers, just to get a feel for what the reaction is amongst the town. And I would say that I don't know what our current class sizes are in the high school example there, but I will say that there is a perception amongst families that they feel the class sizes are too large already, and that that is a concern. And in trying to evaluate why some families have chosen private school options, that is part of the feedback that we received. We'll talk about that later on the agenda. But I think that's an important point. And so the concern that I heard from people, in addition to cost, just purely from their taxpayer hat, their parent hat said, we're concerned that we don't have enough of the, the proper ratio and resources for the kids that are already in the school, let alone having more kids come in. Again, that's a handful of people. Excuse me? This is across the, this is a handful of, this is a handful of people across the board, and I would not dare even say it was representative. This was me simply trying to get some additional voices on a topic that I thought would be helpful for me to better understand what a viewpoint I might take would be.
So.
I mean, the big question is, will we have a set of huge, strong, involved high school level? What is being sacrificed? What classes this fall are not going to be offered? Because we don't have enough students now who are enrolled at the high school. What's not gonna be offered?
So we should run classes for other towns' kids instead?
That is a good idea.
It's, it's, everyone's entitled to their opinion on it, right? So, so some could say, because the, the numbers go down, we, we may or may not. I, you know, one might say, hey, that is the reason to do it. Right? It's up, you know, amongst us, thank you, and it's good, good input that we can take, whether or not, you know, again, there's gonna be pros and cons. That's how, that's, that's my perspective.
What, what classes at the high school level this fall are not gonna be offered because we don't have enough students who are interested in taking it or who are signed up to take this?
Yeah.
I don't know what to be honest with you.
Yeah, no, that's a good que, like, did we lose FTEs this year?
Offered because of that. I don't know what either.
So we're not aware of anything that's being cut?
Yeah. Do we lose any FTEs because of enrollment?
No, not because of enrollment. We lost them because someone is taking a leave of absence and not replacing it.
Yeah.
So we didn't lose any for enrollment.
So we haven't dropped any classes?
Yeah, so we haven't dropped any teachers, Chris, so the classes, as far as I know, operate on like, demand from the students, right? And teachers can teach other things. And again, I'm, I'm new to the seat, but, but I, I, it, it doesn't sound like we're losing any kid, any options. Like, if we had just cut three FTEs from our, you know, our arts department or our math department, I'd, I'd have follow-up questions, you know, but, but if, if we didn't do that, then I, I.
Well. Dr. Morrison, that with the decline, the large decline in enrollment, they might have to look at the different classes that might be on scheduling, and that, that this information would be that brought back to the school committee as to how the schedule works and how the classroom works because of enrollment significantly dropping in the high school. There's no, there's no report.
Okay. So, so we get that, we, we get it. So you, so you're not getting all the information on the specific school? I still look at it, the, the, this discussion is really around the school choice, and, and I, it's, it's, or it could be at a certain time. There could be more seats in given one school versus another. I don't think this is like, something you accept year one, decline year two, accept, you know, I don't think of, that's not at least how I look at it, because of things like siblings that Dr. Morrison has brought up.
Well, not only that, if we open up.
That's not, that's not.
Look, okay, with, with all the respect, I appreciate the input. If, if we want, we can circle back in, in case, is there anyone else?
No, just that we, we say we have 10 seats in sophomore year class, and we take those 10 kids. We are not obligated to have them through graduation, correct?
Correct.
So understanding how tight our budget was this year, I think that that's something to consider as well, that you have the obligation to take these students in and carry them through graduation. This isn't just a one-year decision.
Oh, yeah, of course, I understand that.
So no matter what grade you're taking them at, though, sixth grade, second grade, wherever, you're obligated to have them for the next couple of years or until they graduate.
Yeah. I don't know if we're gonna get to a vote like we're, yeah, yeah.
Right? Like, I think there's a cost. All of these points that have been made, I think there's actually a future cost that you need to be considering when you're taking this into consideration, right? It's not just a right now, you might get $40,000. It's what the long-term impact to everybody over the next couple of years.
Yeah.
It's a little, it's a little scary to me to think that you guys are asking all these basic questions, and you're expected to vote tonight. It, it, it's, this is something that really should, should be pushed off to another meeting, so that you can actually do your homework and get the facts.
I don't.
I appreciate the input.
Chris, I don't totally agree with that. Like, I, I know which way I'm gonna vote. If you told me, you know, you were, am I allowed to say how I'm gonna vote before talking about this?
You can say what.
But like, I mean, I'm gonna.
Generally speaking, we try to get a feel for how the.
Yeah, so like, I, I think it is, I think it is not a good thing for our community if we have not lost it. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out if there's anything, no, any information I missed. I don't know what you meant by basic questions, you know, whatever, but I'm trying to figure out if there's any information you think we missed if I am going to vote against school choice from Medfield.
We're cutting money out for school choice. We're losing money to school choice.
Chris, we always have since 1993. That's not anything new. We have since 1993, we paid out. Kids that go to virtual schools, we pay for that. That's always been the case. It's not like we're losing hundreds of thousands of dollars that we have to recoup.
That's great, but why isn't all this information, all, why isn't all this data put together into a report that is shared with school committees, so everything is in one place? So they can actually study this information?
Chris, Chris, maybe I had individual meetings with school members. Chris, Chris, maybe I had meetings with school group members. That's allowed too. I could have had individual meetings with school group members to go over some of this data.
All the expenditures are on the DCE website.
Because the fact is, you're having a public hearing. What benefit does it have to public? If you're doing this one-on-one with school committee members, and the public is not seeing the data that you're sharing, you're actually sharing with school committee?
Kid, I feel, I feel like.
You're having a public hearing. Yeah, the public is in the dark about the actual data.
It was our responsibility to go and educate ourselves on this topic, which I do believe people have done.
So. I'm just not sure, like, I'm, I'm good to vote. Like, I'm comfortable with my decision. I'm happy to talk to anyone that voted for me to sit here about my decision. I'm just not, I, I just don't, I'm not sure what we're talking about. If you're not for or against it, I guess.
Yeah, to, to me, I think, I was just gonna, one, appreciate the input. I'm not sure, Michelle, if there's any others from the public who have input.
I don't see any of their hands raised right now, no.
Okay. And so, so that, that, at least they, we have some input from the public. I, I was gonna say too, any other, you know, comments overarching as to either research you may have done, information that you've been able to gather, or gaps that you feel you don't need, better informational gaps that you're really, anyone here is looking for amongst the school committee.
I think one of the things that I talked to some of the families about, which was, you know, the, the two-way aspect of this, and the question, I think, on people's minds was, would, would families in Medfield choose to send their kids to another public school district?
Which they can anyway.
Which, yeah, they, they can. I think the general feeling was.
And I'm not trying to interrupt. I want to make sure, clarifying, provided that other district is it, is.
Is a close, is correct, right. So just to try to weigh both sides of it, to understand, like, because we, we talk a lot about the implications of bringing the kids in, but I was also trying to get a feel for how families would feel about going out. And I, I think, you know, a lot of people talk about vouchers. They, they would like to get some supplement for private school perhaps, but not to, to go to another public school. Because that is, you know, effectively why they were here. So that was just a, it was an interesting side of the discussion I, I didn't want to lose sight of, which was thinking about how much, would, would that cause more people to exercise their choice to leave the district in favor of another district? And I, I don't know that we ever get those requests, or how often we do.
I think over time, it may be interesting if, we, whatever we vote yes or no, this is just Tim Knight's understanding. Whether we vote yes or no, we can have students who choose to leave the district. Some, that does happen in some districts. Some of them have lots of students who choose to leave the district.
I saw, yes.
And as that happens, sometimes they need, you know, the, the, the school choice does counterbalance that.
Right.
Right? We do not, that's not a problem that I see today. There's a driver that says, hey, this is, this would be, you know, we're losing 40, but we know we can, we can get 40 back.
Now, some of Chris's, like, we're losing, like, if one kid decides to go, we're losing money in school choice, right? I mean, that's, in virtual high school, it sounded like Jeff said, but like, it's not, if we opened our doors, I think we go backwards the other way a lot.
Yeah.
Because there's a, we moved here for these schools, we pay taxes for these schools. So I, like.
Yeah, I mean, like, I appreciate the information on the high school, but I just think I have to look at it as the whole body. Like, I, I think of this as a, a decision I make more on behalf of the district.
One of the things that struck me in my reading was that. One of the things that struck me, um, in my reading was that you also, and I, I think specifically if it goes to lottery, I, you know, obviously you, you're not making a choice in which students, which, not that you would want to discriminate against students in the first place, but the thing that struck me was if a student was expelled, you know, from a, a prior district, you, you can't say no. You, you let that student in, so we would be open to that as well. You're not allowed to say no. Um, so if they were kicked out of another school and we had school choice, they could come here, um, without any repercussions. And, and like, don't want to be disparaging, but I do think that parents would want to understand that.
Have you guys talked about the other districts that actually have school choice to understand what their, what the pros and cons are from the ones that are actually used?
I still, I'm still confused on.
Millis, Medway, and Holliston, I don't have any contacts in those three districts.
Yeah, again, I, I am comfortable with the vote I'm gonna make tonight, Chris. Uh, I just, I, I, yeah, I'm just not sure what we're talking about.
Public notices.org right now, and at the current time, Cape Cod Times, Wellesley Townsend, Kingham Journal, Arlington Advocate, Metro West Daily News, Winchester Daily Times Chronicle, Boston Herald, Patriot Lever, they all have, and on and on, they all have.
So basically, we're, we're staying on two areas. Right, right now, I was gonna go back to the legality of, of the posting and whatnot. Right now, I'm, I'm trying to get a general, you know, input from everybody as to how they feel about this. You know, I, I think that's a separate topic, I appreciate the information. The, uh, but, but right now, I don't, I'd rather not go into, in, in a minute or two, I was gonna ask you, you know, if, if we're aware of legality, but other, just staying the course on, how, how does everybody here on the committee, is there anybody who did, you know, feels like they need more information before we were to put it to a vote?
I might need a vote.
Okay. The only bit of, the gap that I have is, is again, on, call it, um, the, some, you know, somebody's saying, hey, this was supposed to be posted, we're supposed to do this.
So can I just read what DESI's advisory is, just so you, just so we're all clear on it? The hearing and the school committee's vote can occur at the same meeting and may occur at a scheduled school committee meeting, provided there is notice to the public that this item will be discussed and that members of the public are afforded an opportunity to participate and make their positions known to the school committee prior to the vote that's posted. That's the requirement.
I think I would feel differently if this just showed up on this agenda two days ago if we hadn't in prior committee meetings and prior agendas discussed the fact that it was going to be part of this meeting as well. So I view that as part of the timeline of, of what's been communicated.
Right, and, and I think there's also, I, I agree in, isn't it by June 2nd? It's June 1st, so that it is time-sensitive as well.
Right, but I'm looking at the public hearing, it says, according to Mass Law Law, Chapter 71, Section 38N. No, the school committee will hold a public hearing, this is, this is, there's been no public hearing, there's been no legal notice about the public hearing. And, and it's not even about the legal notice, it's about having, about the public knowing this in advance so that they can actually come to you as well 10 days in advance and express their own questions and ask you about your thoughts.
Okay, so, so at the beginning, I, I. With, with all due respect, at the beginning, as we, we do generally try to keep the, the comments at a certain timeframe. I appreciate that input. Generally speaking, this is something we vote on every year, you know, for as long as I've been here, towards the end of the year. You know, the, the public, I haven't heard people, we, we all try to ask folks around, what do you think, what do you hear? I haven't heard people other than Chris saying, hey, nobody's aware of it, and that's, that's the reason why we're not hearing a whole bunch of people, or we typically don't get a lot of people coming to our meetings regardless. It's been on the agenda, I think last week or last meeting, we said, you know, next meeting, this was coming up. So I feel comfortable that we're satisfying the requirements of DESI specifically around.
Absolutely.
Um, notifying the public of what, what we're doing through our normal agenda process. And, um, you know, I, I feel comfortable bringing it, uh, bringing it to a vote if everyone else does.
Right.
Okay, so, yeah, so if we can, um, you know, as, as far as the public input, I don't think there's any need for any more, so if we can shut that down. So, uh, do I hear, um, or, or, um, it sounds like just from the, everybody's comments, if we were to take it for a vote, it would be to, um.
Yeah, I, I just wanna, I just wanna say one quick thing.
Yeah, so I was gonna, I was gonna ask that. So, so it's, it seems like there's just a, a general feel. I think I, I get the tone of where most people would want to vote, but yeah, if there's any last comments from anybody, I'd love to hear them.
I feel like this is, you know, there are, there are many topics that members of the community have come forward and through the, certainly through the election process for us and probably others for you, uh, that are concerns for them, one of which we're talking about tonight, you know, other things that have come up, um, you know, with, you know, the, the handling of, of, you know, there was the book topic, there's other topics where people come forward and they have a strong opinion, the grading in the middle school, the, the leveling at, at the high school in the ninth grade. We hear from the community on these topics that they care about. They will either show up and hear and participate in the discussion, or we might hear from them individually and have those follow-up discussions. While I appreciate that there might be, you know, some passion around this topic, I don't think that that seems to be a community-wide passion. I don't think that this is something that, you know, you could give people 60 days notice on something. I don't think we're going to get a lot of topic and discussion and input on this because historically there never has been, and this is not a new thing, to your point, this happens every year. And so, again, I felt it was my responsibility to go and read and learn about it and to look at the numbers, what's happening in these other districts that are supporting it. I did those things. Um, I did reach out to parents and, and members of the community proactively, many of whom said, yeah, what's that again? You know, what is that? And so we had to have a discussion about what it meant. And, and this is my point to you, is, as I don't know that we, um, have a meaningful voice of community on this particular topic anyway. So I think we, we take the information we have, we take the inputs, people are worried about size and space for classes, they're worried about the cost, um, there's a general feeling of people not wanting to foot the bill for people that don't live in the district. That is just input that I received, as I said, it's not a mass population, but, you know, a dozen or so people, um, that helped round in on a choice that I felt I could make that was representative of at least some set of our community. So I just wanted to say that it is not without data nor is it without input that I would make a vote.
Well, thank you. So, okay, so, um, is there a motion, uh, to take a vote and, based on what I'm hearing?
I'm not sure, sure, Mr. Chair, but you would have to close, close the hearing first and then take a vote, or I forget which way we do it, to be honest with you.
Okay, so we vote.
It's one way or the other. One way is wrong, one way is right, so. I think it's close the hearing, I think it's close the hearing and then take the vote.
Close the hearing. Open up the school committee meeting.
No, and then, no, I close the hearing and take the vote, and I think that's all, you know, it'll be safe that way.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, one, is there a, uh, motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second, Kristen Semenini.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Uh, second, is there a motion to vote on, uh, vote, from what I'm hearing, to decline to elect to participate in school choice?
Still moved, Michelle Kirkby.
Seconded, Will Horn.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Four ahs. Okay, thank you. So, and we've closed the public hearing, so now we're gonna open up, um, the regular school committee meeting. And I think we take a real call to open that up. So, tonight here.
Michelle Kirkby here.
Kristen Semenini here.
Will Horn here.
Okay, great. And, uh, at this point, we'll take public input. Citizens in attendance or on Zoom will be welcome to comment during the public input. Push the mic or raise your Zoom hand, share, share your name and address. Um, if you're on Zoom, we'd appreciate it, um, if you can, share, you know, your camera, that would be helpful. And, um, we ask that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes and on topics that are under the purview of the school committee.
My name's Colleen Tierney, I'm at 14 Hatters Hill Road. I've just noticed that enrollment and student withdrawal was on the agenda, and, um, I have been hearing a lot of conversation, uh, probably because I've polled a kid from high school and the middle school. I've just heard a lot of more conversation than usual in the town about the increasing number of students leaving, um, the Medfield schools, especially in the middle school grades. And from what I've heard from some admissions contacts that I have in private schools in this area, there's, they're seeing a significant jump in the enrollment from Medfield students. So I just wanted to share that, that's what I'm hearing, and I just want, and I, um, but I also understand that there are now exit surveys available. I don't know if, is that true? Like, I don't, there wasn't one when I, when we polled my daughter last year, so I think that's great, um, if there are exit surveys. And I just wanted to know, like, how those are being distributed, who reviews them, and I just think it's really important to capture the reasons why. I mean, I have my own predictions, but they may, you know, may or not, may not be true, but, um, and if, I also just want to know, like, is there a plan of, for transparency and sharing that information? Because that could solve some of this, like, low enrollment in the high school, because if people are flocking, in my opinion, they're avoiding the middle school, then they get attached where they are, they don't come back to the high school. And that's the trend that I'm seeing. So if we can maybe make some improvements in the middle school as far as academics and, um, some of the agendas being pushed there, I think that would keep some families here, and then we would have a better enrollment in the middle school and the high school. So, that's.
No, thank you, and that's on the agenda tonight.
Great.
So we, and I think we're gonna.
All right. I just wasn't sure what that meant, so I just, those are my questions, so I will sit tight.
Ties are rated.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other hands raised or? And I think, um, just as, as, uh, we are gonna take a vote, I think, on the math curriculum?
Yes.
So I would, just, just based on that topic, I, I think we would be willing to open that up, um, after, after that discussion. Okay, uh, no other hands, and then otherwise we'll go with that. So then, um, and help me, I'm still getting used to the consent agenda and the role. So, uh, but I think what we, the consent agenda is we go through all of the items listed, uh, which I'll raise in a minute. If anybody wants to pull any of those out, they can, and otherwise we vote on it as a, as an aggregate. Uh, the consent agenda is approval of minutes, the regular meeting on 4/13/23, and the, um, meeting in front of, uh, the town meeting on May 1st, 2023. The school committee dates for the 2023-24 school year, Medford High School Student Advisory Adjustment Journal, Medfield High School Student Awards for Graduating Seniors, and I'm just gonna say that, that the specific rewards are in the packet and, uh, out there published, uh, as well as, uh, donations. And again, the donations are, uh, in the packet on the agenda, and, um, go from there. So is there anything in, in there that anyone wants to call out? Do I hear a motion to approve consent agenda?
Second, Kristen Semenini.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, I would say, uh, as well, congratulations, I don't know if we could be, um, read out the, the awards, but congratulations for those that are, um, receiving awards and a massive thank you.
Yeah, so what this does tonight is allows the, allows that money to be withdrawn and given to those students, so, um, you have to approve it and we send it over to the town, the town releases that money for the scholarship, so thank you.
All right, and, um, I will, I will call out just out there that, that the donations, though, um, from a $3,000 donation to NHS, the high school gift account, $1,000, um, from Mr. Ray, I would not say his name, Schalackin, to the Dale Street gift account for the Dale Street Library. Mr. Schalackin's wife was a former Dale Street librarian.
So he does that every year. Um, his wife was one of our librarians and passed away, and, um, every year he, he gives us, uh, a check in her memory, so, very nice.
Yeah, no, actually, I'm glad we spent a minute on this, and thank you there. And, uh, $1,300 from West Ed to the Dale Street gift account for Dale Street's participation with their recent learning study. Again, thank you, love, thank you for that. New business, uh, we're gonna talk about the elementary math, uh, curriculum recommendation and vote.
Mr. Chair, we have Christine Power and Jen Belsky here tonight. They have done a great job coordinating this really comprehensive pilot this year. We, we got a lot of great feedback from parents, from students, from teachers, really well done, and, um, happy for them to present that to you tonight.
Thank you. Everyone, my name's Christine Power, I am the Director of Instruction Innovation. I'd like to introduce Jen Belsky, she is our K5 Math Coordinator, and it is our pleasure to talk about the K5 Math Pilot that's been unfolding this past year. So, tonight is really the culmination of two-plus years' worth of work, and all of it was centered around some guiding principles. One, which is what do we value in math instruction? And the second is what do we want math instruction to look like? Now, how does that unfold in curriculas many different ways? And these are the some things that are posted, the bullets really articulate that. It's about the quality of the materials, the alignment to the Mass State frameworks, connections that students can make to real-world scenarios, differentiation, representation in, in terms of inclusion, diversity, the rigor of the curriculum itself, as well as student engagement incredibly important, and ease of use by the teachers. Another thing that this is, is also the sequencing, that spiraling of math curricula, so concepts build as grades unfold, and so after one grade, after another, after another, and so there's a deepening and a more enriching experience. And so those two guiding principles really guided our process, and as I said, it's over two years in, in the making, and it's something that just, wanted to share the depth of work that has been done. We developed a series of rubrics, really conceptualizing these two principles in terms of looking at curriculum itself, both evaluating what we had and also curriculum that was available. We looked at the, something called Ed Reports. Ed Reports is something that's been published for a number of years now, and the best way to, to capitalize this is it is a Consumer Reports curricula, really evaluating curricula across the country and really providing districts and people who purchase curricula a really substantive way of looking at curricula. So we, we created our rubrics, and then from that point, really looked at Ed Reports and decided we would only look at high-quality curricula, curriculum that met the highest standards that is articulated by Ed Reports, and that was 10 different curricula. And at that point, we pulled a bunch of teachers together, we had representation from teachers across the, the, the three schools, and together we used the rubrics, we really talked about curricula over, over the two-day period. And at that point, we were able to narrow down the number of curricula to evaluate, we had samples in hand, we were all looking at them, from the initial total amount down to three. And then we decided to really think about how we were going to pilot it effectively. Now, the pilot happened over this past year. We selected three high-quality curricula, and of that, we selected three teachers in each grade, pre-K through five, and they were able to receive training, um, information, curriculum materials. We also notified parents and guardians, and we really got this set, so we had different windows of time that we would pilot the three particular curricula. We also developed an evaluation process where we could understand specifically what was going on and looking at things such as, uh, ease of use, um, student engagement, and alignment to the curricula. And at that point, it set off. We, we started in September, the beginning of the school year, wrapped up the pilot process at the end of March, and then Jen and I crunched a whole bunch of data and, and came up with the, the final recommendation. Now, our pilot curriculum, there were three that we selected, and this was part of that initial summer group that made up of teachers across the district. All three are considered to be high-quality as according to Ed Reports and also aligned to our guiding principles, and they were Reveal Math by McGraw-Hill, Alesian of Math, and the publisher there is Kendall Hunt, and Stepping Stones by Arigo. And our analysis, again, was pretty intense, but something that really provided us a lot of information. For pilot teachers, there were three different groups, um, and the pilot teachers, they each received a survey every other week. Not only did that give us an understanding of, uh, whether they liked the curriculum, of course, but it asked more specific questions. The every other week allowed us at every point of time to really understand how the curriculum was unfolding over time. What is some supports that would be needed if we, on week? What is some supports that would be needed if we on week two versus week four versus week six, for instance? So they received surveys every other week. In addition, we had a culminating survey at the very end. To really assess in terms of what are the strengths and what are the areas of improvement for the curriculum? As well as we had a focus group and opportunities for teachers to come and share and see across grade levels in terms of how that unfolded. In addition, we had parents and guardians have an opportunity to reflect and provide their feedback. And love that was based on their conversations with their child and how math was unfolding within these pilot classrooms. And then third, we had students and we had grades two through five. They completed surveys at the ever at the end of each of the three pilot windows. And they provided us with a specific, you know, just really great feedback as well. And again, the data was analyzed. We presented this work to Dr. Morrison as well as the elementary leadership team and spoke together. About what are the strengths and what are the 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 different aspects of the pilot itself? And together, we came together with this final recommendation that we're sharing with you today. Now, a couple of things is that with the data, the areas of focus were slightly different and wanted to point that out. For teachers, we were asking questions specifically on ease of use, meeting the needs of all students and student engagement. Whereas students and families were focused on meeting their needs as learners as well as their child's needs as well as student engagement. And with that. Our results.
Okay, so after crunching all that data, getting all the feedback. The one that sort of rose to the top for people was illustrative mathematics. Illustrative mathematics, for those who don't know, is a problem-based curriculum where students actively solve problems and they work together. To develop their understanding and communicate their ideas. So although the teacher is involved and there is explicit planning, teachers are asking questions and ensuring that students are. Understanding concepts and developing their understanding. The students are working together. Much of the time in an illustrative mathematics classroom. And that was something that our teachers and students really enjoyed and really thought was beneficial, which we'll get to in a minute. Again, like Christine said, illustrative math is highly rated by ed reports and ed reports is an independent nonprofit. That works to ensure that all students have access to high quality materials, so they evaluate. Programs at the elementary level, the secondary level in all different content areas. Math is only one component of what they do. All right, so our feedback from teachers centered around student understanding, ease of use and meeting the needs of all students. And one thing that our teachers really liked and really thought was helpful was the collaborative activities prompted students to think beyond. Wrote recall and memorization of math facts, and it gave them a chance to engage in real world problem solving. So what you're seeing highlighted on the screen is a quote from one of our teachers. That says it forces students to think and make connections on their own rather than just teaching them a trick. Which they really thought was helpful and it set a strong foundation for the kids' mathematical knowledge moving forward. Teachers also felt that the lesson materials were clear, concise and easy to use. They really felt like they could implement it easily. They weren't spending a lot of time sort of preparing materials and. Kind of decoding what they needed to do. It was laid out really well and was easy for them to implement. And meeting students' needs. Illustrative mathematics uses open-ended prompts. They're called instructional routines to launch lessons that provide multiple entry points for students. So all students can participate in these instructional routines and all students can feel successful during math. So what you're seeing on the screen is a picture that is an instructional routine and actually I can. Share it with you here. This is the actual slide that students would see and that teachers would use. So they would see this picture and they would be asked, what do you notice? And then what do you wonder? And so students would share what they notice and what they wonder, and ultimately the math that is sort of behind this picture, what we're getting at. Is arrays, which leads to multiplication, which is a very big part of third grade. So it is a way for all students to sort of access that understanding or begin to think about that concept and feel successful.
So this is the example of our student survey, so you can see them on the left. We had happy faces and up and down, asking questions about how they feel about math. What do you feel about learning math? Did your math book help you learn math and? And did you math? Did you enjoy math? I think it was the third one that's blocked. And then they had open-ended questions again. I love seeing the students writing and Jen had the opportunity to crunch all that data. And it it became clear that a majority of our students enjoyed the activities. There are multiple activities as part of this and as part of that student engagement piece. Not only there are activities, there's something called centers that really provides real world. Ways for students to make connections through games, et cetera. There was an example of a real world connection is, for instance. When teaching about fractions is using sandwiches and how to divide. You have three friends, right? And you have two sandwiches. How would you divide the sandwiches? So everyone gets the same amount of sandwiches, things like that. Things are real world way. They can can make connections to specifically things that they see every day. And the quote that a student made really pulls this still together. It makes us think really hard and it pushes us. The problems and situations are super creative. Another area that we looked at is meeting students' needs, and that is the opportunity for written content that provides through. There's diagrams, there's a turn and talks, there's visuals, there's a multiple different ways for students to both. Enter and and really engage with that and really display their understanding of that. And so one thing with with illustrative, it's very clean, it's very minimalistic, it's very streamlined, but it provides them with. Open space and plenty of opportunity to reflect on the math. This is not about the how methods, the why of math and really understanding those concepts. And so all those different pieces that came with the curriculum really supported that. And so you see that the quote itself, I love the less overwhelming pages and math this way makes me feel good. Right? It's not busy. It's really straightforward. It's about the math, but in a really engaging way. It was important for us to get feedback from families as well, so all the parents and guardians that were associated with the pilot. At the conclusion of every pilot window, they were sent a survey, and you can see the bar graph on the right. That the vast majority of respondents commented that they were either super positive, very positive or somewhat positive. On the illustrative program. And I love the quote that was stated there. My son went from not liking math to being obsessed with math. He is now almost a grade level above in some areas. This program has been wonderful for him. And this is something that's indicative of of all, very reflective of a number of the comments that we received. That they found that the students were able to engage with the concepts easily, that they were engaged, and it really pushed them in terms of their depth of knowledge in math. So we're at next steps. Again, there's lots of planning and process to this point. Really proud to present this information to you today. And we're getting things ready hopefully for the next steps, which would be seeking approval from you. And then from there, there's a number of things that would go into place. If we do receive approval tonight, we would go and communicate this with the MPS community. Communication's been an important part. We have a dedicated website that's specifically attached to this that provides different aspects. Of the pilot all along the way. We would schedule the student, the teacher training. Teacher support is a really important part of this as well. And that that training would unfold within the summer or in in and during the opening days of school. Order and distribute the materials, of course. And then the other part, which is key, was that we learned a lot through this process over the past two years, really talking, engaging with teachers. And understanding the different parts of that. So we would look and revise our data collection process to continue forward. What did we learn from the process is a whole bunch of different things. I talked about that survey that was every other week. Understanding how this unfolded along the way so we could make adjustments. We would take on a similar data collection process where we would understand specifically. Where are our teachers' needs? What do they need support in, et cetera? So they have opportunities to voice. And that would be not just in a survey, but opportunities for them to engage directly with us. And then, of course, provide opportunities for ongoing learning, thinking about ways that we can build upon this great math knowledge. And provide support to our teachers and our learners themselves. So with that, thank you very much for the opportunity to present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is this replacing the envision math?
That's right.
Okay. Obviously overwhelmingly positive feedback, but I'm curious in the negative feedback. If there's anything in particular that, you know, was called out, and if so, how are you managing to that?
Yeah, great question. There were a couple of things. Again, no, no program is perfect. I would say one thing is that the colorful piece of it. It is very, as I said, minimalistic. That it's typical sometimes with elementaries to see lots of bright colors and things like that. This is very streamlined, so it was a little bit. Unusual for our students to to see this, and that's something that it did show up in some of the student surveys. But the I would say that the activities themselves, the engagement through not only the center activities, which are these large scale activities. But also those individual lesson activities, the opportunity to turn and talk, to talk and engage, to show your work in different ways. That is more than a color on a workbook in terms of student engagement, so that would be one piece.
I think another thing that our teachers really want to make sure is that we attend to the needs of all learners. So that's something moving forward that we're gonna really closely monitor. I've had conversations already with special education teachers about how they might use this program and some of the pieces, there are unit adaptation packs. That will allow them to sort of meet the needs of students who have unfinished learning from a previous grade level. Maybe they're not quite ready for a unit. They need some, you know, some reminders or some review of what they learned last year before they they go ahead with that. So I've already started working with special ed teachers to sort of unpack those pieces with them. So that we can meet the needs of all learners, but that is a conversation that we've had.
My question would be like, was was this it? So we didn't get to see the data on the other ones, right? So the parent feedback, it was basically five negatives out of forty-three or whatever, so that's pretty good. What were the other two like? Was this an easy decision for you? Did the other two have more negatives?
Yeah, one was crystal clear. One was a little closer, but the one that was the one that was, I'll say it was stepping stones that was a little bit closer. That one was very positive within a specific grade or two. Not across all, and actually it wasn't contiguous either. It was different. We we looked at things at grade level to see that. And so that was one thing in just in terms of it, and that had to do with a couple of different things, the the engagement of the games, the the. The layout in terms of the color and the and the layout of the space, but I will say that.
Those are positives or negatives of the.
That was, it was, I would say, I would touch it, it was a nod towards that in some with some. Grade levels and and not the majority by any means, that it was a slight nod, I would say, towards.
Better colors.
Yeah, that and that, but overall, if you looked at the whole, that it was very clear that illustrative was the popular.
Thank you.
You know, I liked it. One thing I liked about it was the structure that day where we locked, we went through some of those lessons. And that struck, they they do a really neat structure where it's whole class instruction on the rug, which was great. Teacher did a wonderful job with the technology. The kids were there. They got some direct instruction from the teacher, went back, did some individual, then did some collaborative, then came back on the rug with the teacher for. Progress monitoring. It was really well done. I mean, I I thought it was excellent.
It was, it's an active, joyful opportunity where kids are really talking about math. And in in just a very deep way, and and it's very engaging, and that's something that being a observer in that. And and it showed up in the data as well.
I thought stepping stone was good too.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree.
Those lessons too, I thought that was good.
How often do we evaluate math curriculum?
The pandemic set us up a little bit in terms of delay, so this one were a little bit longer. The goal is within every five years, so to take a look, see what's working. And then what needs to be changed or approved with the pandemic, we were a little bit on a pause on that, so. We were a little bit longer on this one. I think this is year eight in this program.
The thought right now is if this is approved going forward, this would be for the next five years, five years, and then you would kind of evaluate. And if this is approved, the plan is to roll this out in the fall, like this, the next steps piece. Is there a cost differential between this and what we do now?
Were this and stepping stones?
On par, the this illustrative is interesting because there's a more focus on teacher PD and support through that. So the products themselves are open source, so the products themselves are are less expensive, but the important PD that really makes this work. And that is, that is, that's a cost that's a little bit more. So in all the cost, I would say per year is. It is, it's different because of a contract situation, but I would say it is. Lower for for the actual print materials, but the PD would be more expensive.
And you know, when we did envision, the PD was upfront and there wasn't any follow-up after that. And it was, it was kind of all part of the package. We did that eight years ago, where this is a higher focus on PD. And teacher engagement and then much lower cost of materials.
That's right.
I always felt like the envisioned books, like they were half unused. I've I've got a bunch of half-used envisioned books in my house right now.
That was one of the issues we're looking at, for sure.
I have a kind of follow-up on Michelle's. How often is, you say you evaluate roughly every five years? How often is like you choose to do nothing? You know, keep doing what you're doing.
Like you like the program you have, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so like when I when I looked at those options, one of them wasn't necessarily.
I mean, that we didn't, we did evaluate visions along with this as well, so that's part of any review process to see terms of what's working. And that's part of the, it was an initial conversation too in terms of our hearing from our teachers, but that would be part in terms of our curriculum itself. Envisions does have a newer version than it is out than is out right now. And that was part of our original look in terms of that that initial ten that we looked at.
Was there anything you would look like that you were going after, like, hey, why not? You know, this this is the. Some of the things that we think we might fix with an alternative.
Yeah, those were that initial conversation and those visioning of what does math, what should math instruction look like? And what do we value in math instruction? So those were really part of that guiding piece and helping us formulate those rubrics to look. And then that the edit red reports has been super helpful and really. An outside observer really measuring on a flat plane across all the different curriculum. It helped us narrow down the twenty-plus curriculum out there to really, what are the high quality curriculum out there and helped us really zone in a narrow. But we we wanted a variety of different opinions, and that's why we do three. Most districts don't don't. Pilot this many, but we really wanted to make sure that whatever pilot that we had, that whatever curriculum that we adopted really reflected us, our values. And really is best for the district, and we're really comfortable with with the decision with the data set going forward.
It's helpful helpful for me. I I'm playing it back, but so you it was more about, hey, what's the vision of what we want it to be? That kind of started, that that's where you started and and then that's that's good. I mean, that helps me understand it. It wasn't so much, hey, we need to solve X or Y. Any other questions? And is there any, I think we were gonna, we were gonna take this to a vote. We we wanted, given that the topic, we we would open this one up. We we don't always do that, but if there is any public input.
You're online and you want to comment, you can please raise your hand. Or I can read it. Do you want to bring the person over or do you want me to just read the question?
Typically, we bring them over.
Can you raise your hand so that? I have one question in here. Can you raise your hand so that Owen can bring you over? Owen, are you able to?
Working hard today, Michelle.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, are you able to turn your camera on?
Working on it.
There we go.
Sorry. I was looking for my question that I typed, but I'm just curious, how does this?
I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not trying to be a pain. I just don't see the zoom, just name and address, if you don't mind.
Oh, sure. It's Courtney McCarthy at Six Willow Circle.
Okay, thank you, Courtney.
Sure. I lost my question.
I can read your question that I typed out. Courtney asked, have we looked at other school systems' views of these programs and if those schools saw improvement in math? For their students as part of the transition to newer programs? Just curious how we measure that this will be a more productive and impactful program for the children's growth.
Yeah, we definitely looked at other districts, so some other districts that use this include Lexington, Weston, Acton, Berkshire. Franklin, right? It's relatively new curriculum. So we really relied, first of all, with those conversations in terms of the unfolding, first, it was super popular amongst all those different districts. The different connections that we had within that district and seeing it unfold, the student engagement, the deep level thought. And the deep learning of that was really critical in part and part of that. And then, of course, the ed reports in terms of that. This is also something that was critical in terms of the alignment to the particular frameworks. And the engagement and ease of use.
Was Courtney's question about the number, did you look at like M Cask? Did Courtney mention like numbers in there?
Measuring the success.
Like how do you, so I appreciate that you said, you know, it looks thoughtful, but did you get any data?
It's too early yet, and to be honest with you, the curriculum. It's too, it's too early yet. And to be honest with you, the curricula was rolled out in Lexington, I believe, two years ago. Acton Barksboro, two years ago. We're, we're, we're really in the early stages of that. It's not, it's something that, um, those that were, translates to MCAS isn't, isn't quite there yet.
Okay.
Is that, is that the primary KPI you would use, which is MCAS? Or are there other data points you would use to measure?
For sure, but also internal data in terms of that, that, um.
Yeah. I just have a follow-up question. And so if you're going to use MCAS, right, we've got, they don't start taking it until third grade, right? What's that?
So that's a progress monitoring assessment that happens three times a year with our kids.
Oh, that's the, that's like the standards-based reporting?
No, it's a, it's, it's an online, um, assessment that kids take for mathematics.
That's like probably what the teachers speak to in the conferences, right? It happens three times.
Okay. So they, so this year when they were doing their evaluation, so I had children in the pilots. I had no, you know, every time I filled out the surveys, it was kind of like, I don't even know what I'm filling out. Cause I didn't know about that website that you mentioned, but I, I had no data to really evaluate or provide any valuable input in the survey. I just kind of was like, I guess things are fine. So as long as my child's progressing, I guess it's still working. And I guess I'm okay. I guess I'm I guess what I'm looking for was how are we going to measure it to know we're going to get that improvement? So it sounds like you're saying the star reporting or whatever it's called is going to be used. And then ultimately MCAS in future evaluations when you revisit this again in five years.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. So I think it, um, any other comments, questions from the? So otherwise, I think we, we would want to, let me just say this correct. So, um, seek approval from the school committee to select, I'm just going back to illustrative mathematics. Excuse me?
There's actually a debate about how you say that word.
Thank you for, I, I mean, I thought I was meant to take a math quiz.
We've gone back and forth a million.
You, you, you just made me feel a little, a little, not a little better. Illustrative.
We used to say.
Do I hear a motion to approve, um, um, moving over to illustrative, illustrative mathematics for the elementary schools?
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for all the work. And the enthusiasm, more important.
Thanks for letting me know. My Envision books are just book stops at this point. That's true.
Okay, at some point we're going to get rolling. There's a couple other heavy topics tonight, so. Uh, but I think next, next on the agenda is, uh, coincidentally too, it, uh, was coincidental with Colleen. But we, we had definitely heard, uh, about enrollment and we had asked, uh, Dr. Marston to do some research and share some background, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, a couple of things, you know, we have, I'm going to talk about the new enrollment withdrawals, but also the twenty-three, twenty-four enrollment and kind of where we are with that. So we use NASDAQ each year for that planning and we do that for budget planning. We get it in the fall. We get it again in the spring. Um, so we're currently at twenty-five hundred, twenty-five students, twenty-five, twenty-five. Um, and NASDAQ has us going into a slight increase next year. So our, our current kindergarten registration is a hundred and eighty-eight students. Um, and our graduating fourth grade class is a hundred and ninety-nine students. But NASDAQ has our kindergarten projected with, with actual births at two sixteen. So, um, that, that happened last year. We, it was a little bit lower and then kids arrived in first grade and the first grade numbers went up a bit. So, uh, we're waiting to see what's, what's going to happen with that. But we right now have, um, all of our full-day classes filled up and we have half-day, uh, slots available at this point. So we'll be looking for any students that come in in the kindergarten level would go into our half-day program. So in terms of our withdrawals, um, we have currently forty-three withdrawals in the district for next year. Thirty-two of those are for private school. Tw- twenty new enrollments, ten of those are coming back to Medfield from private school. Um, in your materials, you have the private school numbers for the past thirty years. So we did some research on the past thirty years for private school. Um, and you also have private school numbers for local districts to give you some context to our numbers. So we average, um, six point seven percent of our students in private schools over the past thirty years. So we've had a few waves of higher percentages you'll see in there, where some are at seven point five or seven point six or whatever. Uh, but we, we average always around between six and seven point five. And that's over the last thirty years. So our last thirty years, ninety-four percent of Medfield kids have attended the Medfield Public Schools. That's before COVID. That's before anything else, you know, recently. Thirty years back, we've always had that many kids consistently in private schools. Uh, if you look at what we have in local districts, you'll see in your materials. And I chose the, the districts that we put in our budget, um, mail that we did. That we tried to kind of connect to those districts that were their per pupil expenditure. So, um, Wellesley currently has twenty-four point nine percent of their students. So seventy-five percent of Wellesley kids attend the Wellesley Public Schools. Needham is nineteen point three attend private school. Dedham is seventeen point four attend private school. Dover is fourteen point nine attend private school. Walco eleven point five. Westwood eleven point one. Norwood is ten point nine. Miller six point six and Midway is three point two four. And of course, we're right below Norwood at, um, at the six point seven percent number. So when you put it in context and you look at the last thirty years of what we've averaged, and it's been very consistent over the thirty years. And you see what we have in, in other neighboring districts. We're still at the six point seven percent and we, we have been, I'll say it again, for thirty years. Um, that, that's kind of where we're at. However, you know, one of my coffees, my superintendent coffee in January, um, a few parents suggested that I, um, survey outgoing parents to get a sense of why they're choosing private schools, which I thought was a, 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 a good idea to kind of get some feedback, seem reasonable. Kristin and I met, talked about that, looked at, I had put together, uh, a survey in January, in February, right after that. Um, she and I looked at it. Um, she gave me some feedback and we changed a couple of things on it. Um, and I sent the survey out. So we sent the survey out to, um, thirty-four families and we got eighteen responses so far. Uh, it was anonymous and I gave them the option to email that if they wanted to follow up with a phone call to talk a little bit more, um, that they could do that. I haven't, no one has taken me up on that yet. Um, so some of the questions, just to share some of the data to get a flavor of what, what the themes are.
I just was taking up, how many, uh, uh, the survey is, how many, how many results?
Eighteen.
Okay, eighteen up there for, thank you.
So far.
So far, yeah. So first question was, would you be making the same decision to send your child to a private school if you lived in a town other than Medfield? So we want to kind of get a sense of, is this a Medfield, is it above Medfield or are you be doing that anyway? Because we do have legacy families for certain schools or for sports reasons. Six people said yes. Zero said no, and twelve are not sure. Um, and then we, we went to some open-ended questions. Um, what motivated you to consider a private school for your child? And were there any specific, uh, factors about the Medfield schools that led you to seek an alternative? So some of the themes that came out of that, and we just, this is really broad themes and, and general themes. But, um, the top one was academic rigor for higher performing students and nine folks put that down. Um, athletic opportunities in private schools. We had four people do that. Um, concerns over middle school grading system. We had four people do that. Um, COVID handling in the aftermath of COVID, three people. Um, concerns over class size, uh, three people. Family legacy with a particular private school, two. Concern about the Dale Street Building and sending your child there, one. And issues with available books, uh, library books and content, one. So the last question was, how important were extracurricular activities in your decision to switch to private school? We used a five-point Likert scale. Um, five people chose that number five, which was the reason they went was for extracurricular. And, uh, four leaning toward that was one, uh, three was four people, uh, two were three. And then one, which was no reason at all. Five people did that. So pretty much half and half in terms of, um, of that particular item. So, you know, that's what we got so far. It's only been out, I think, a week, week or so, right? Just a week we've sent that out.
May fourth or fifth, I think.
I'll send out a reminder next week to try to get more people involved. And then if we have additional folks that decide to go to private school, the process that we're going to use is that the, the registrar, that the data person in our district, the registrar, she will send that link as part of the process of withdrawal. So that we can get it in real time, like right after people withdraw, they can get it. So it's not just an email from me. Uh, I will say that I did get emails back from parents saying, thanking them, saying it's a good idea and that they wish, you know, it, it maybe she could have done it years ago when my other kid went to private school. It's good to have this information. Um, so moving forward, we're going to continue to collect the survey data, look for themes. Um, we intend to create another survey to send to parents, because we have a list of parents that explored private schools, but decided to stay in Medfield. So really get a sense of why just, why did you choose to stay in Medfield? You know, because that, that is something that.
And why did you look though? Why'd you look in the first place?
So I ended up saying, so that was something that, um, we want to get data on as well. Um, you know, this is something that I think we're going to do every year. I mean, even though we know that over thirty years now, we have data of thirty years that ninety-three to ninety-four percent of our kids attend the public schools. Um, the data from the six to seven percent can always be used for improvement. So we want to make sure that, that we do that and, and keep that up. So that's kind of where we're at right now, um, with that. Happy to answer any questions or any follow-up. Um, I will say that there is, you know, to Colleen's point, there is a, a spike this year in eighth grade, um, going to private school. It's twenty-one kids right now going to private school in eighth grade. Um, I don't ever remember seeing it that high, uh, but it could be.
I thought we looked at five years ago. It was higher five years ago. Or did that not take out the Tri-County?
It did, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, it didn't take it out.
Do you remember what that twenty nineteen, twenty twenty was then?
I, I'd have to go individual to see what the Tri-County, so that's, that's one of the things that, that happens. If we have students that go to Tri-County, we also have students that move. So, um, you know, we have, right now, out of the eighth, the current eighth grade, we have seven kids that are either going to Tri-County or moving out of the district and moving out. So, um, you know, that obviously impacts the withdrawals. But I think it's also an important, you know, little data piece to know that ten of the kids so far that, that have enrolled are coming back from private school. Uh, I think that's an important data point. And I have that information too. Uh, I have to go through the grades. We just did, I can hold on one second. Okay, so two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, um, returning from private school. We had twenty-one students return from private school. Three at grade ten, two at grade nine, two at grade eight, two at grade seven, three at grade six. Um, one, one, one at five, four and three, four at grade one. And four grade one and two at grade two. So, I mean, it's across, spread across those areas.
So when, when we first started digging into this, um, and I guess before I say that, I, I want to thank the families that pushed on this concept, because I'm, I think it's the right thing to do. I, I know you agree, which is why you had already drafted something up. But I, I think it, it's important that we do this, we continue to do this and that we watch that trend. And that we report back to the community every year on what those numbers are, so that everybody is aware and we can all see what's happening. Um, admittedly, I think I was a little focused on the eighth to ninth grade transition, simply because what I thought the sort of noise that I was getting was coming from that set of families, um, who were making the, the decision not to move forward to the high school. But I do not want to lose sight of, I think, the fact that, Colleen, you were, you're really speaking more to almost the transition from fifth to sixth even.
They normally get like maybe one Medfield student every other year typically. Like they hardly get Medfield kids because they're good. And next year they have six or seven fifth graders coming into that. So one.
So we have, we have two fifth graders that are listed.
Two that have announced their plan to leave.
Well, I guess, like, six are enrolled.
Oh, you're saying already are there?
No, for the incoming. So it's, maybe they won't, it's, you know, the numbers, I'm curious to see.
An interest, but so for instance, when someone looks at private school, they contact the building principal because the building principal has to give information.
Yes.
You know, that's, that's part of the process. So I know that Steve has received six or seven requests this whole year. On that. And we have, we have two that are committed from fifth grade to go next year to private school.
When do we typically, I mean, I think the private schools need to know, right? Cause they've got.
They know already.
So we wouldn't expect much of a jump in that number throughout the remainder of this year.
A fourth of the class, yeah, for next year is from Medfield. Well, one fourth. And I think that.
Yeah, I can't imagine that.
The reason, the reason I wanted to push on this was because I wanted to make sure that we were given numbers to look at, that we could see the trend of that, um, and that we could validate, you know, to some extent, some of the, the root cause of that. So while I, I don't disagree, there's probably a lot of discussion. I, I would like tend to, and I think we can get that through these numbers, is understand how many people considered it and how many ultimately made the choice. And then use these surveys as a vehicle to understand those decisions in both directions, because I think that's important.
Like, yeah, you could also commit to a school and not go.
Of course.
You know what I mean? So like, but I'm just saying, like, I've just gotten comments like, oh, did you hear all these Medfield kids? And I was like, oh, I'm not.
Well, those are the numbers. We have the real numbers.
Yeah, understood. Yeah.
December, but I'm just curious. I'm, you know, I just want to be like.
Yeah.
So Colleen, what we do is the, the numbers that are in this, and this is online, it's part of the school needs packet. Um, this report gets filed every year in January. So these are the number of kids that are in private, pro field school, um, from Medfield as of January one, which is the time we get all the information back from private schools. And then the total number of school-aged kids in the, in the, in the town of Medfield. And then we get that percentage of how many kids go. So by January one, we'll have an absolute number of what that looks like. We'll have it by grade levels.
Yeah, I think what we talked about was just making this a, an annual readout, if not more, definitely an annual readout. Because what we want to do is see, is that, is there something with a particular class or grade level? Is that a consistent theme? You know, that is what we want to watch.
Yeah, that way, you know, if some of us don't, you know, don't feel heard, you, that's a way to feel heard.
For sure.
That's why. So, and, um.
I was, I was really excited that eighteen people already stepped, because I wasn't sure. Like you never know. If you put something out there, are you going to get? I thought eighteen so far is really good.
Yeah. And then, so that was my other question. It's just a part, like, if you say, you know, want your transcripts sent or whatever, like you ask to withdraw, like it's just a, here's your survey, like, or do you have to ask for it?
It's going to be, so what we did is I got the list of everyone that has already withdrawn. And I sent that email to all of them.
Okay.
But from now on, when you, if, if someone withdraws, they'll get the link to that survey. So they can get automatic. It's not going to be, no one's going to have to ask for it.
Yeah, like if it's like, oh, you gotta find it. Okay.
No, it's not a secret squirrel. We're gonna, we're gonna give it to.
Okay. All right. That's great.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, my, my question, Jeff, you said that like forty-three withdrew and thirty-two went to private school?
Right.
What are the eleven, other eleven kids doing? Are those just like moving or is that?
Moving or, a lot of them are moving or they're going to, um, Tri-County.
Okay.
So majority are moving because only four kids are going to Tri-County.
Okay. That's, doesn't really matter. And so nine, it says academic rigor?
Yes.
Was, was cited? Was, is there like an open-ended piece of that where we can dive into that more and figure out what? Cause like, like what does rigor mean, right? Like what are people looking for from the school?
Yeah, there were, that's like all in the open comments. And I, I guess one of the things I would say too is that the, the survey in and of itself was like a first pass. I think the hope is to also look at the written responses and see if there's some more fielded questions that can logically be pulled from that.
Okay.
Um, so this is sort of like first trial. Let's, you know, see what people respond. But I think in general, there was a sense of, um, you know, for students on a more accelerated path who needed to be challenged more was sort of what I think we heard a few different times in some of the responses. But yeah, the, the raw results are there.
Yeah, because I, I too was like a little confused in the numbers and trying to figure this out. And I, uh, hear Colleen and like, you know, as the new member, maybe people come up and talk to me and trying to figure it out. It, it is a little tricky, because if, if I want to go to private school, I might enroll there, pay the money and not tell the public school yet. So whenever this is like final, final, we can get those numbers. Cause I'm looking through it, it is a little like, it's, it's murkier than I thought. It's like an issue I'm trying to get to the, to the bottom of. It's just like a little funky, because like, you know, I could pay the hundred bucks that my kid go to school or a thousand, maybe, you know, whatever the number is. Enroll them, but we might not know yet as Medfield public. And so it's like, I'm trying to get through like the rumors and what I'm hearing. And it's, it is just a little funky. So I just, I want to name that. I think Jeff talked about, but it is like, a lot would be a lot easier to be like, who's going and who's not? So I can figure out if this is something that's just being talked about on social media or a real problem we need to figure out. And it is. It's like, I've put time into it. Sounds like, you know, Kristen's put time into it. It's, it's hard to get to the bot, like, it's just harder to figure out than I thought it would be.
Exodus to avoid middle school, and I keep hearing about that.
Oh, me too. I'm, I'm hearing about it too, and I'm trying.
We don't see the numbers for that at all.
Yeah, the numbers, ironically, it's really more the eighth tonight. That's why your comment was very interesting.
Well, to your point, I mean, come fall. More kids down the pike, and I'm like, I'd like to send them there, but I want to see some changes.
And I just want to be, um, mindful as we do this over and over. Um, we, I definitely appreciate the input. As we go deeper into conversation, I think it, you're representative of one, you know, individual, one specific area, and I think we just, we want to be mindful of that. And it's like where we do the public input, we sometimes get feedback. I would just say my one reaction that I have is, is the one that at least I'm relieved to see the long-term numbers, right? I think we always have to be thoughtful about that. Um, but that eighth grade number seems high, right? That, that's, that's a number that.
Seems high to me.
Yeah, you, you, that, that's something that to me is like, that's real data. And, um, I think that, you know, we, we've talked in the past here around things like the standard, standard-based reporting and what's going on, but I, I think, you know, that, that's something that investigation would, would continue.
Well, and I don't, I also don't know if there's any merit to it, Tim, but like, I would be like the, the income of a given set of, you know, families in a town, like if you look at the ones that are sending their kids to private school to high percentage, it's the high-income towns, like where does Medfield sit? Where are we trending? Like, that could also change numbers over time, you know? People have.
Yeah, I'm not surprised at all with my whole livelihood's data, and you can look at it and you can come to so many different conclusions as well. You know, it's not a, it is a tricky topic, but I, I think it was, um, timely that there was public input on that. That, um, we definitely were hearing that. Christine, you, you brought that up a few, you know, while ago, we, it would be worthwhile to have, you know, a conversation and some data, which, which we have.
Yeah, so, yeah. So the current numbers are, there's, there's three fifth graders that we know about and twenty-one eighth graders, right? That's what I, we got this whole time. So you got them, like, we might not know yet, right? That people are pulling up, so.
So yeah, it's, it isn't, there is a certain degree, like, the, the fact that we're talking about it here is a great start. I, I know, you know, this is my experience with Dr. Marsden is that there's additional work going on, right? It's just, it's a longer-term game. Okay, anything else on that or are we? Uh, next one was, I think this is just a notice that I think we're aware, uh, the June first school meeting, uh, was gonna be, uh, the June first and was it the fifteenth?
Yes.
Yeah, June first and June fifteenth. Um, there were some logistical items, I think, with the falling around the last, was it the last day of school? So we're consolidating those into a single meeting on Monday, June twelfth, and I think, um, now, does anybody have any scheduling issues or concerns?
So we're no longer doing the one on the first, just the twelfth.
Are we gonna start it earlier in case we need more time, given we're consolidating or no? Is, I don't know if there's.
So we've, we've done a preliminary discussion on the agenda. Typically, the last, you know, as you get, as you get towards the end of the year, there's, um, definitely some important things, like we, we want to hear from the various PTOs and, and, you know, communities that are represented. Uh, we do typically do some awards, um, for, you know, the retiring teachers, uh, acknowledgement for their. And, uh, I think we would just watch the agenda. As, as a general rule, there's a change the timings that often, because people want it to at least be reliable. Like, I, I'm not seeing, like, we, we at least talked about it a little bit. I, I'm not seeing like, hey, that agenda is getting so long. You know, and I think we are thinking about, uh, trying to do a workshop either later in June or early in the summer. Um, but right now, we don't have, we don't have dates, you know, confirmed. Um, so we would think that, that we would continue to do, you know, conduct the business in the school. Forward, uh, any, uh, other items since posting? Okay, old business, um, I'm interested to hear about the strategic plan. Is that's, uh, progressing and, and want to appreciate all the time that everyone's putting into it, but that, that is, um, I think I said that before, some of the fun stuff, you know, just in terms of listening, hearing and, and learning.
Excited the last meeting was all data. It was all data, Tim. A lot of data. Do you want to get, because I can give my update on this one if you want to.
Um, yeah, I would say that, that we had a one, uh, one meeting and then one data meeting. It both gone very well. Um, one of the things we talked about, it was not really divulging too much outside the group. Yeah, so I would just say things are going well.
And, and that's like procedurally, where are we? So we're all on the same page. Where, where are they now and what, what, what else needs to happen?
Um, our upcoming meeting, um, so what we've done so far is we've talked about, um, we've looked at all the data that we've gathered from all the different stakeholders from throughout, um, the community. Um, we've been able to, we divided into different groups, kind of bubble the themes up to the top. And then we come together next time, we'll be able to look at kind of some of the bigger themes that we're all seeing as we look through the data.
I concur. I mean, the, the first, the first one's kind of a, a brain dump, you know, for, if anyone doesn't know, to all the people listening out there, you know, we're shooting for like our pillars or our goals more or less, right? So the first one was kind of a, a brain dump by the people in the room. The second one was look at the data, see if it's kind of the same, and, you know, we're, we're heading towards trying to find our, our, our pillars, right, or our major goals for the district. Um, the, you know, they're, we're seeing if they shape, you know, right now the consultants we hire are putting things together and we they have like three more meetings, you know, it's pretty fast and furious. I think we're trying to get it done by, by June. So we meet basically every other week for two or three hours. Um, and again, it's just kind of been brainstorming and looking at data. And so hopefully we'll get closer to like, what are our goals and needs, and then how are we going to, to get to those through professional development? Uh, you know, and teacher training, through everything that our administration does to just be focused on what's best for our kids.
So one of the things that I, I did, I, I met with, um, Shell and Tim the other day. We thought it might be helpful if I just shared some of the information around Medfield twenty twenty-one and give kind of a high-level overview of some of the activities or, or goals that were reached during, during the time we've had Medfield twenty twenty-one, just to give folks a, a sense of what the type of improvements we can expect with our new plan. Um, so I just put this together, um, looking at, we, we, we had five goals and then there was accompanying, um, strategies that went each with those goals, um, collaborative learning, uh, well-being, the whole child, community and facilities and equipment. And then we had a whole myriad of goals that went underneath each one of those, but I want to just highlight a few of those just to give you a flavor of what, what the new one will look like. Um, so goal one was the collaborative, collaborative learning. Um, the school district will establish expectations and opportunities for common playing time for teachers. So that's something that we heard a lot about when we were developing. Um, having dedicated common planning time where teachers in, um, at, at all levels can get together, can talk about teaching, can look at student data, can plan together. Um, so now we have that dedicated time for all of our teachers pre-K to twelve, and we have contract language that reflects that, which is really, really good for us. Um, revise the current induction and mentoring, um, model, uh, to reflect the current, uh, DSE regulations. So we were, we had a model that was a little loosey-goosey, um, a few years, ten years ago. So one of the things we wanted to do as part of this was to really, um, beef it up, make it a robust mentoring program, increase the meeting, uh, requirements and expectations and make sure that uh, we have trained mentors. So that was something that we really put a lot of time and effort in. Um, that's been really positive. Uh, that's led by Christine, Nat and Susan Baikoff. So that's been a really good, really good goal to attain. Um, I won't go through every single one of these. Uh, goal number two, well-being. Um, implementation of our transition rise program at the high school, you know, to have a doctoral-level psychologist and a teacher working in the same room um, to support kids with their academics and their mental health is really invaluable. So that's been really positive for us. Um, and parent and student feedback has been really, really positive with that program. Um, hiring personnel, we wanted to make sure that we got a resource officer, guidance at the elementary and adjustment counselor at the secondary level. So multiple budgets that were supported by the citizens of Medfield had allowed us to accomplish this goal. So we do have guidance counselors at the elementary schools now, which is really important. We got that in before COVID, which was great. Um, and now we have two adjustment counselors for secondary students, one at the middle school, one at the high school. Um, we did have a, a full-time SRO, but unfortunately, um, the lack of personnel at the police force has, um, has, has required them to pull that as a full-time position. So we're really hopeful that that position returns soon. Um, we, the first few years we had that, we had a, um, police officer, SRO in the high school and other buildings, um, all day, every day. And that isn't the case right now. We have person that's available to us, but not necessarily, um, stationed at our, at our high school or our middle school or any of our schools, which we want to make sure that we can get that back as soon as possible. Looking at goal number three, um, you know, we looked at, uh, review a current courses, courses of studies for students in the schedule at the secondary level. And I would say one of the bigger things that we've done, the high school schedule remained the same for over twenty years. And we were able to, um, implement a new schedule, um, that provided flex time for kids. So there was kind of an equity issue where um, the only time kids could meet with teachers was after school. So our teachers were great, they stay after school and, and meet with kids, but if kids had an activity, if they had, um, theater practice, sports, a job, they just couldn't do it. So the flex time allows kids that if they need to meet with a teacher for any reason, uh, whether it's academic support or, um, to review homework, or if they were absent to review work, they can do that during the school day, during flex time, which kids have loved. I know every time the kids come here, they talk about that. Um, that's been a really, really positive change. It also has rotating days and blocks, which we never had that before as well. So that's been a really good change. Um, looking at the community goal four, uh, we looked at, we, we wanted to redesign our website and add a phone app, uh, for, for parents and staff, which we have over two thousand downloads to our app right now. Um, and we've increased our functionality, our SIS, that allows the mass emails that you folks all get and also report card creation, which has been really positive at the, at both the elementary and the middle school to kind of coordinate the report cards with them. They didn't have that before. Um, and then we continue to use social media as part of, you know, getting the good word out and the good things that are happening. Um, we also had a goal around transitions in, in systems from grade to grade and school to school. So, you know, this is really interesting one for Medfield because of our structure. So our students are required to have multiple transitions during their pre-K to twelve experience. Um, we successfully prioritize the communication among teachers and have students move up or meet and greet teachers and staff prior to transitioning. And something that we've done, which has been very successful, is all of our eighth graders meet with their assigned high school guidance counselor while they're in eighth grade. So they already, when they get there in day one, they know who their guidance counselor is, they always, they have a, um, a touch point already to who that person is and they, and they feel really good about coming into the high school, uh, with that. We also, um, with our ninth graders, they start school on the first day early, on, at the regular time, and we, we have our older students, our upperclassmen, um, start later. So that allows our kids to have, um, the whole school to themselves, their first few hours of school to get acclimated to it, and that's been really positive, a positive change as well. Um, and then goal number five, you know, one of the things we did was, was combine the role of director, director of facilities with the town. So now that, now Amy is the director of facilities for both the town of Medfield and the schools. Uh, and that allows one person to oversee all of our, all, all of our, uh, property the town owns, kind of like Owen does. Uh, the technology for both the town and the schools. And this has really led to some efficiencies for us. So, um, prior to this and prior to Michael arriving, um, the town would bid out electricity and waste in the school to do it differently. We had two different companies, two different, so it didn't make much sense. So we knew the economies of scale were there, and we bid that together now. So the electricity and the, and the rubbish removal in collection, um, gets done, uh, with the town, which is really a savings for both. And then, you know, we wanted to make sure that we expanded our wireless networking elementary schools. So that's, that's been an important thing to do. Um, Owen's been great in leading the way with that. So it's not only just our day-to-day operations, but also making sure that, um, kids can take MCAS, because that's all digital now. It's not paper and pencil anymore. And, um, and having all of the, the technology that we need for that, not just the wifi, but all of the, uh, Chromebooks as well. So these are, I know I went fast and when I skipped some, but these are just kind of a flavor of some of the things that we did in Medfield twenty twenty-one that folks can expect once we put together our, our new strategic plan and kind of check those off as we go through and make improvements and make changes. Happy to answer any questions.
When you say, when you say Medfield twenty twenty-one, is that just the old vibe?
Yeah, that's just the name of the old plan.
Oh, okay.
Just developed in sixteen.
Just me right from the jump. Shall we, I don't know if this is the place or time, but like, those are the positives, but like, where are we missing? Or is that not even a conversation for here? Is that a, what we talk about?
No, I think there's things that didn't get accomplished in the five-year plan that will make their way into the new one. Yeah, for sure. If they were priority then they're priority now.
Right.
You know, so I think that's something that we need to, you know, I think communication is one that was all throughout the Medfield twenty twenty-one, that's definitely going to be in, in this one, you know, just trying to, you know, one of the things that we put in the last plan that we haven't accomplished yet is making sure that there's one standard way that teachers communicate with parents. And some use this app, some use another app. If you have multiple kids, you have multiple apps to communicate with teachers and some just use email. So just trying to streamline that, so it's easier for parents. Like, that's one area that comes to mind that we really need to make sure that we're doing, and it makes its way into the.
Yeah, because like, we mentioned the positive of transitions, like the kids get to see the school early and meet with the guidance counselors, but I think from some of the, the feedback I've heard, the transitions are like a, a big opportunity, or like, you know, if we have kids fleeing from private schools from eighth to ninth grade, and there's a concern over middle school, like, so it's like we, we hit some of the transition stuff, but it sounds like that should still be something we're working on, not just transition of like seeing the building, which is a good thing for kids to do, but like getting those teachers to talk and like that common prep time and like, how do we get away from these islands and help?
Yeah, I mean, we definitely have that as part of the department. I mean, the nice thing is department meetings they have to do that. So the common planning time is either grade level or by department, so departments can get together and have those conversations. So that, that's definitely happening too. But yeah, I mean, that's, transitions are going to be ongoing goal forever. I mean.
Yeah, and for all districts, that's not unique to us, but it's just.
Any district you talk to, that eighth and ninth grade is, is a challenge for kids, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah.
But we can always do better with it, for sure.
One of the, um, the things that did actually come back from the survey was in appreciation. I don't know if this was new this year for the open house with the high school? That seemed to be very positive. Is that, was that new or have we always done that?
Well. It was nice to have that back again, yeah.
Seems very popular.
And we're doing middle school and high school conferences now, which will help maybe transition with parents and communication. But next year will be the first year we've done that, right? That's nothing I've ever heard of in other high school districts.
Yeah, first, first time ever next year.
Okay.
We have a committee in each building that's worked, been working on that all year for structure.
Yeah, just how to schedule, when you have so many kids in different classes.
It's tough. I mean, it's, it's challenging at the elementary level when you have twenty-five kids, never mind at the high school level when you have a hundred, so.
Right.
That's what they've been working on.
Uh, thank you. No, it's helpful too, I think, just in Michelle, I just want to raise that, but think about the work we're doing and for, you know, you're doing, and then for us when we look at it. You know, we want to be going back to that strategic plan. Again, you know, I've heard other at the MASC and whatnot, hey, should that be the, you know, in some ways structured the agenda? You know, it's, it's hard to say exactly. Some of it is, you know, it just naturally happens. But I, I think the work we do and the review we do over the next, you know, thirty to sixty days and, and on that, you know, is incredibly important.
Well, our, our CEO, right, you know, he set five goals at the beginning of the year, and every time we had a company meeting, so let's say it was a quarterly basis, he'd grade us on each of those. You know, and say, okay, you, we're doing A on revenue, but we're doing a, a B on, on the, and, you know, similarly, you might want to have that kind of a readout, once we have the new strategic plan in place, where it's sort of like a self-evaluation of how it's going on some frequency that is logical to do so, understanding some things are longer-term projects.
Yeah, I think that was something we were going to talk to the, um, consultants about as well, like.
Yeah.
Some sort of dashboard, right? We talked about that.
Dashboard as well, like, know which of your districts are doing this successfully and how are they communicating to the public on where they stand on the goals that they have there.
Yeah, we talked about that at the last meeting. That's one thing we have to do better is tell the story better, you know, and how we're doing. And a dashboard was one way, but trying to get it, some sort of system that allows us to get the word out, uh, on a regular basis of where we are and where we stand on all these goals. That's, we have to do a better job than we did with the last five years.
Yeah, get them out and, yeah, the dashboard are like, may have somewhat, where we can, like quantifiable goals, right? So we can really, so we can see, because I think in the work I've been doing and looking at other strategic plans and stuff, in education, it's not the same as like business, and I think it would help to be, to evaluate better if they're more quantifiable. So I think we'll work towards that the next couple of meetings with the consultants and team.
Yeah, I think so. It, it can be more quantifiable, but I think education itself lends itself to be qualitative, you know?
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to do, but it's also hard to evaluate if we hit the goals, if they're not, you know, if we're like, yeah, the kids seem happier, you know, or, or like, so. We're working on it.
Okay. Um, and speaking, one of the elements in the plan, community engagement and communication. Um, I know, I think for a little while, I was, uh, Michelle and I were kind of, um, let's say just, uh, driving that a little more through the year. But I, I think one of the things we said is we got from, you know, March into April, the strategic plan, making sure we're getting community engagement coming into that, which I think was, was positive. the strategic plan, making sure we're getting community engagement coming into that, which I think was, was positive, was, was one of the top of mind. You know, I am excited as we, we're going to have the MCPE and PTOs coming in next week. You know, like, one of my own observations is communication is, we always know it's a two-way street. It's one thing to share the news, good or bad. And, and it's also making sure we have really great feed on the street so we can hear what's going on. And, you know, that, that's been something that I've, it's been important to me since COVID. You know, I think we all started to learn how important when our kids were at home that the teach, they needed to hear from us. And, you know, that, that just seems to be, that, that's a theme that, you know, I, I think is continuing. We'll see what comes out of the plan. But those are, those are some things that, you know, we continue to do. Michelle's, your social posts and whatnot, I think you're interested.
We started this, you know, at the beginning of the school year in regards to the ways that we could be more outward facing, right? In regards to partnering with PTOs, bringing in parent representatives from the site council to speak here and launching social media, understanding how people get their information was something that I feel like we hadn't had a conversation about. So I feel like we've made some good strides in that space. And I'm looking forward, I guess, to like how we can continue to look for opportunities to increase that. So. And we crossed over eight hundred across all three of our social channels, which I thought was kind of cool because we really only did, we did one launch at the beginning. We haven't been asking people to find us. We haven't been telling people. It's been a lot more organic on how people are getting their information, right? And I think it's telling them how some, how people, we know how people get their information, right? But it's good that they are now getting it from us sometimes too. So. Yeah, I feel like there's a, a lot of good pilot programs there and I'm hopeful that we can take some of them in the middle of the year.
Yeah, no, and that, I, I don't think we have it on the agenda tonight, but as we talk about a workshop, that's some of the themes is, hey, what do we look like? As we go into next year, how do we, you know, like, how do we run our agendas? What's, what's really, you know, on them? But I think that that's where we would have a little more conversation. But I, you know, community, it, it never stops, right? It's three legs of a stool, parent, area, parent guardian, a student and a teacher administrator, if we're doing all three right, that's okay. Oh, gosh, and we close on policy update. Whose idea was that?
You need to start putting that at the top of the agenda, Tim, if you want to get any airtime.
So Leo's not here, but I, I would say, just as we transitioned the group, uh, we were starting to get rolling on policy. We are, you know, going to, I'm going to try to get that going again. We're in theory, we're, we're reviewing, you know, one to two sections every month, bringing them for, you know, that's with Leo, myself, who's representing policy committee and MASC. Trying to find the right balance between our current policies, their model policies and when and where change is appropriate. And then bring those forward to you folks, which we've, we've done. When, and generally it's informational item, which you're going to have here today with section C and D. It's now available for you to review. This is considered the first reading for A and B, which is you've, you've taken a look. We can discuss any questions or concerns. And that doesn't mean we're, we're doing anything. Once you go through information items, then there's a second part of that where the following meeting, we would potentially take a vote on it. Then the reminder, the way we're doing it, the policy manual is, it's under a thousand pages, but it's a lot of pages. We are voting it almost that this would all go in when all sections are approved. So you're, you're voting it that we've, we've tagged that, but we're trying to get through all sections. Theoretically, I'd like, I'd love to target December of next year. You always have to go back to what are the priorities this month and this, you know, at a given time that sometimes things will slide. So sorry for the long-winded reminder, but it, it is something that we, we have to focus on. So any questions, comments on the reading of, of sections A, or I'm sorry, sections, yeah, A and B?
A and B.
Yeah. No.
No.
Okay, good. And you've got some great reading in front of you between now and June twelfth with C and D.
Where is, I, I got the A and B, which I'd previously seen. Where is C and D?
Yeah, and I, actually I did notice, did I see that? Do you just? We're still waiting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, they're not there yet?
Yeah.
Good, glad.
Okay, so it's, um, yeah, so it's not officially an informational item at this point. So we just need to mark that in the, in the meeting minutes. So that'll be coming your way. And I, I need to get going on that again. It's not because I don't love policy. Good lord, all right, right, right. And so I think informational items.
I just have a couple. They're not on the agenda, but I'd like to have maybe one on the agenda next time. Uh, we've, we've established a partnership with Regis College to really to work with our high school kids to offer college-level courses for them to get credit, to really start a pipeline for educators. So we started Education 101 from Regis College with eight students the other night, which was great. So they're sophomores and juniors. They will receive college credit for this and will be committing to this program for the next couple of years. We, it's paid for totally by a grant, which is really good for us. We got a grant for D E C to start something like this. And Mary Brule and I have met with Regis numerous times and we were able to secure that class and eight kids that are interested. So.
To be educators.
To be educators. So they're going to get, uh, three college credits after this class is done. And then next semester in the fall, have another class and it's be open to more kids as well. So we're really excited about that. But I'll give you more information on that at the June twelfth meeting. And the other thing I wanted to just mention is that MCP had their, uh, their annual meeting on Tuesday night. Um, and they presented the district with a check for one hundred thousand dollars. And that is to for all of the Reach For, Reach For The Stars grants that were part of their thirty-five year celebration. And one hundred thousand dollars will pay for each one of those grants in the school. So just really thankful for the work. And thank for everyone that donated to MCP to get that, to get those funds. So really appreciate the work that they did. I'm sure they'll talk about it when they come on as well.
Hundred.
Yeah.
Wow.
No, that's good. It's, uh, that's great to hear. Yeah, and they'll, they'll be out next week or in the twelfth. And they typically do a little bit of a.
They'll do a recap.
Yeah, what are we, what are we doing? It's, it's usually a fun event.
And on top of that, it was fifty, I think fifty-four thousand dollars worth of grants in the three grant cycles this year on top of one hundred thousand. Doing great work.
It's, uh, it's fantastic. Any other, sometimes informational items is a little less formal. We definitely don't want to go into any heavy topics. We're not allowed to, but just sometimes it's, hey, I was walking around town, I saw something.
I didn't see the Wheelock. Did you see the Wheelock? I, I didn't see the music performance, but I saw the art show and felt like it was lovely.
Really cool.
Saw the art show. Fortunately Dylan had the seven o'clock slot, so I gotta watch the video when I get home, but he's very excited about it. He can sing high and low. Yeah.
I, I was able to get to the Dale Street PTO. They had a pretty full agenda. So I was mostly just, you know, listening and hearing about what they have going on. It was their last meeting of the year, so they had a lot. But I did reach out to them after. And one of the things I, I did ask about was the best channels for communication and sort of get the fourth and fifth grade family perspective on that. So like, hey, where do you, you know, where do you trust? Where do you go? Where do you hear? Kind of all carry on from the, um, the meeting that we did with, um, Medfield Outreach. So still just really consciously trying to get people to tell us where they get their information and where they hear about things so that we can make sure we're reaching people where they want to be reached. So my update.
Great. Last one, future agenda items right now. We think we wanted to talk about school start times to really almost kick off that conversation on, on June twelfth.
So it's on the agenda for the twelfth, just to talk about it?
The overall process and what it would look like, general high-level timeline and what we'd be looking at.
Okay.
Right? Because if we want to do this, it's going to have to be, it's big.
Right.
Right? So this isn't just a one-topic talk. This would be high-level, what the process might look like, what we need to get this done and kind of a general timeline to get there.
And is, is that the meeting in which we would want input?
So, so high, high level, without going deep, I, we don't think so. We, we, there was just some debate, like, just to understand the process.
Okay.
And if we were to hold a meeting at a later date, what are some of the things that we think would be helpful? So, so that's, that's the intention. By all means, it's, it's, you know, we plan on putting it on on June twelfth. You know, that, that's a topic people can ask about, but we're not.
But this is more of like for all of us to understand and be educated on what it could mean, what it would mean. It's not a decision.
No.
No, no, just making sure. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, that will probably take us the entire school year and next year.
Yeah.
You know, to work on that. To have many different types of input from families and teachers and students and everything else. So I, I already have, there's a junior, one of the junior civics classes is doing projects. And there's maybe six kids that have reached out to me for different topics and two of them reached out for school start, four of them reached out for school start time. So we had meetings last week and two of them already emailed me asking to be, I told them about this, you know, looking forward. They want to be on the committee next year. So that's great. They're really, they're really committed to a later start time for high school kids. Yeah.
But is there a way, so I know you said it took the whole year, but like, I don't, we, I just feel like I should even start like, start talking to the community about it, even if it's not what we talk about on June twelfth. But so is there a, we might not even know this by the end of June twelfth, but a path where we do it in like twenty twenty-four? Like, we talk about it all next year?
That would be the goal, I would think.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah, but so it's still like, it's, it's far away, but it's like still only like one school year away, which is like big changes for people. Yeah, awesome.
I think that's why it's on there now, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I mean, the teachers still need to get in.
Of course.
Look at the buses. Like, there's a lot of big impacts up here. The community, obviously, as well. We want to be getting as much input as possible. So understanding that we would be targeting the following school year.
Yeah.
Start understanding at the next meeting what that, what are the big rocks?
Sure.
To get there, right? Like, to go in that space. So, yeah, so that's where we're at with that.
And we brought that up during the last negotiation with teachers, letting them know that uh, we would be bringing this up within the four years of the contract. So we did a one-year and a three-year contract last time. And we had a conversation about, uh, this is something that we're going to, you know, pursue or have committees to discuss, but this is definitely on our radar for the next four years. So we talked to them about it as well. I mean, if it wasn't for COVID, we probably would be there already. But, because we had the conversations prior to COVID and then, as we know, everything changed, so.
Okay. And then other topics, two thousand twenty-three retirements, end-of-year updates with CPAC, Medfield Music Association, MCP and PTO, which is typically something we do each year. And that was the one thing, the next meeting at the Agenda Reads, June first, I think this in the conversation, it goes to June twelfth. And we keep it at seven PM. Two hours and four minutes. Hey, uh, yeah, do I hear anything? Anybody want to try to make a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close the meeting? Will Horn?
Second, Kristen Semenini.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.